Welcome to the February 6, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in executive session since 5:30 PM on an individual personnel matter and a contractual matter. And can we stand for the Fudge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Meredith Mearity.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Jody Monroe.
Michael Cooper.
Holly Dellenbach.
Christine Beth.
Chris Meyer.
Judy Keaton.
And Willow Bear had a work commitment, so she won't be here this evening. First up is approval of the minutes of the January 16, 2019 regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate? Go up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Amy Craig, and I'm the President of Student Senate, so I'm just here to present on behalf of them. So lately, we've been working with Ms. Conway on the Be the Change Initiative, which is an initiative to improve like character in the school. So Student Senate has been going around to local businesses, collecting gift cards. So far, we have Perfect One and I Love Books who have donated it, and we're trying to get some more for that. We just had Snowball, and that went really well. We had, I want to say, over 500 students attend, which was pretty good. And we also just had a food drive at the middle school and Glenma Elementary, so that all went to our backpack program, and that was really great, too. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you. On January 26, Capital Region BOCES held a breakfast with, to have a conversation with area superintendents and legislator, legislators. I was able to attend. It was a combination of all of the component districts who focused on four priorities for our representatives. One was a state aid to enable all schools to meet student needs and continue with valuable programs, to allow the creation of regional high schools, expand access to college and high school programs, and then establish and fund universal pre-K programs within a single system. So there were other priorities, but that was the focus of the discussion. There was a good turnout for that, so hopefully, it's helpful for our representatives to hear from districts. I'd also like to congratulate our History Bowl team. Members of the Middle School History Bowl competed at the Lower Hudson History Bee in Jan, January 26. The team included 7th graders Jeremy Calderon, Tyler Goldberg, Justin Mo, and 8th grader Matthew Collins. They won the division, and they have qualified to head to the National History Bowl in Arlington, Virginia in April, so more to come on that. For our Art Department, we have some high school students, Abigail Taylor, Julia Higgins, Sydney Sokah, and Maggie Forsyth, who were accepted into a juried art, three-dimensional show. It's a select exhibit of art from high school students across the Capital Region, and these artists were selected from 242 works submitted from 18 high schools. And if you're interested, their artwork is on display in Mahanison High School from February 4 through the 28th. And finally, I just wanted to provide an update on the School Start Time Committee. We met a couple of weeks ago. There was general consensus that in order to move forward, we should have a transportation study, but that seemed to, all of our conversations seemed to come back around to transportation because it's just such a huge component in any change. So we agreed to do that, and I met with BOCES a couple of weeks ago, who had offered to provide this service, although in meeting with them, they've not done this work before. They didn't have much of a proposal, at least yet. I did have a represent, a meeting with a representative from Tyler Technologies, who is our software or vendor that we use. The gentleman I met with has done this work quite extensively, and he will be submitting a proposal as well. So once I have both of those, I'll provide an update to the Board. And that's my reporting.
Thank you. Next up is the Board of Education report. I just wanted to say that I'm sure many, if not most, of us got to see The Lion King at the middle school, and it was truly spectacular. It's hard to believe that those students were middle-school age, such professionals. So I just want to commend everybody who was involved in that production. And are there anyone else?
Just, I saw Lion King, and I thought it was a great show. I also went to a CAPSville meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was on mental health issues and initiatives within schools. There were a few things that I hadn't heard before that we've discussed as a Board since, and I brought it back. And the other thing I had, I was approached by a parent today, and I thought there was some, some, it was a good question. They wanted to know, because I believe there was a fire drill at the middle school last week that was unexpected.
Two.
Yes. There might have been one planned, one unexpected.
No, they were both unplanned.
Oh, both unplanned. Excellent. So the question they asked is, what do we do with the kids that are in gym class, they're in shorts, or they might have just gotten out of the pool? And do we have any provisions, like somewhere, because it was really cold temperatures, that we should be concerned about the kids being outdoors? And, you know, what do we do in those type of circumstances? And if we don't have an answer to that, we can come back. I just...
Well, I have a little bit of an answer. So they, technically, they have to go outside. You have to evacuate when the alarm goes off. But we are, we've had some conversations recently because the, in that situation, the temperatures were so low, or you could potentially have hazardous weather. What are some options? So I have a, scheduling a meeting with the town, because apparently the, perhaps our SRO, if they're available, could clear an area, so you can clear an area and have kids go to an alternate location. Or we could work with the town, there's a fire marshal in the town that potentially could give us the okay to go back into the building, but it's not a...
I'm just thinking about, it doesn't take that long to get frostbite, and if we're at like seven degrees, zero degrees, below zero, and we have a kid who just got out of the pool or shorts, maybe we look to have a location to have coats or something that, you know, maybe we store it in school, and when there's a fire drill, somebody just grabs it and brings it out. Just, I mean, just as precautionary. Especially in light of the Iowa student, I think it brought a lot of awareness. There was a Iowa student who was out in the middle of the night, got caught in the freezing cold, and passed away unfortunately. So I think it was a valid point, so I just wanted to raise it.
And in those two situations, we pretty much knew what happened, so we knew where to focus, we knew the alarms that went off, so you could probably clear an area and have kids relocate.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Jody, for those that are not aware, you used an acronym SRO.
Uh, School Resource Officer.
Okay. Just want to...
Sure. Few things. Lion King was, I graves absolutely amazing. Two favorite things, I thought, the elephant, the large elephant coming down. They told you to keep your feet out of the aisle, and I know why. I mean, that was, just some of the costumes were absolutely credible. And then just, you know, some of the actors and actresses were just, you know, did an absolutely unbelievable job. We, the Hammergrill PTA had an ice skating event over at the YMCA, and I risked my life and limb and went out on ice skates, and I can say that I successfully held the rail all the way around at least two or three times, so that was good. Other Board members were more intelligent and didn't go on the ice, so Holly, congratulations, smart move.
You're welcome.
But it was a great event. It was a lot of fun. There were a ton of kids there. And then the third thing, a couple Fridays ago, I went on a field trip with Mrs. Danors' class, and we went over to Mahanison Ele, Elementary School, Brat Elementary, and they have a Nintendo lab over there. It's one of 100 schools in the country that is now, has a Nintendo lab in it, and it's all kinds of cool technology, experiments, motorized vehicles, all kinds of cool things. And for the first and second graders, you could build your own little car, program it, use the devices, and really, the kids loved it. We were there for two hours, and they just had a blast. So I think it's something that, you know, that we should potentially look at, or at least just be in conversations with them, because I know they were more than excited to have us come. So it truly was a great opportunity, and maybe something for us in the future.
And Chris was on the video.
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry, you're listening, Dave? This sounds really cool. To scope it out.
Is it video games, or is it more like hands-on?
What they, well, for the first or second grade level, they, they took the Nintendo Switch, and the pieces come off, but they vibrate. And so you could use that, and they had like these little fold-out cardboard cars that you could make. And you put the pieces in there, and you use a joy pad, and with the vibrations, the car would move. So you could, you could control it, and for the, you know, the first and second grade level, it was more just controlling it. When you get to the middle school levels, it was making, making your own controls. And once you get to the high school levels, more doing coding, so you could code the, whatever you wanted it to do. So there were so many different variations that you could do with all these things, and we just, you know, only had two hours, so...
Do they use their, the lab with all three levels? Do you know?
Right now, it's just, this just started back in the fall.
Okay.
So this really is, and it's the, I forget the gentleman's name, and I shouldn't remember, but he's the assistant principal there, and he is the one that got this at the school. So they're just starting now with elementary, but with plans to expand.
Sounds awesome.
Before we continue on, I forgot to mention pig students. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or until the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. If we go till nine, we'll take a break at that point, so you can come and sign out. If you have any paperwork that needs to be signed, you can see any of the Board members here. Okay? Okay. Anyone else?
I also got to enjoy The Lion King. Spectacular. I particularly liked the giraffes. The elephants were neat, but the giraffes had to take some skill to maneuver, and those were nice. And every one of the actors and actresses should be commended.
I also saw The Lion King Jr. I thought it was wonderful, and I was struck by how many kids are involved with it, which is wonderful, but how many hours they must spend preparing for it, and also with the parent volunteers. I really appreciate everyone involved in that. I also went to the Elsmere 4th and 5th Grade Orchestra and Band Concert and Choir Concert this week, and I thought it was wonderful, and I just wanted to thank all the teachers involved with musical education, especially at the elementary level. I'm sure it can be very challenging introducing students to instruments and getting them to the point where they can play music that's recognizable, so that is such a challenge, and we really appreciate it, especially seeing the difference between the 4th grade and the 5th grade, how much they can grow within that year. It's really impressive. So I just wanted to acknowledge music teachers at all levels, how much you do for our students.
Mike, I have one other item. I also participated in the Scheduling Committee meeting. I was impressed with the deliberations that were had, especially with coming to the decision to have a study done on the transportation, because it seemed that that is the hub of things. There are several, what do you call them? Not opportunities, but there's several ways we can go. And the idea is to figure out which way is the best way to start to form a basis of a schedule if we decide that all the other pieces can't fit together. So it's, I know I've heard from some members of the committee, of the community, that they're concerned about this committee dissolving. I don't see that anytime soon, and I think this study is a good first step.
Jonathan, was there a timeframe in mind for the transportation study?
I'll leave that to Judy.
When I met with both BOCES and the rep from Tyler, I asked if getting it done prior to the end of the year was feasible, and they both concur that that would be...
Doable?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
If it turns out BOCES can't do it, is, is there another option that we can explore?
There might, there might be. I don't know, without having, understanding the software and routing, how easy it would be, but that, there, I haven't the name of someone else that I could reach out to.
Mike, I had suggested at the meeting that we have two different companies do it, because it's sort of like when you're getting the numbers, although they got the population right this year, getting population numbers is incredibly difficult. It's like the weather. Depending on which model, the European model, the American model, there's another model, but depending what model it is, you're looking at, you're going to have a different forecast. And my concern is that we put our hopes on one particular model, and it may or may not work, and I wanted to see if, if it was cost-effective to try and get another company. So if you can find someone, I think that would be good.
So should we explore a European company?
I'm not sure that they would, that they would help, and remember, they're in kilometers.
That'd be very generous.
And do we have any committee reports? Okay. All right. Our first presentation tonight is a public hearing on the Cold War Veterans Exemption.
Point of order.
Yes.
I need to recuse myself from the conversation and any vote, because I work for the New York State Division of Veterans Affairs.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Judy Keaton, and at our last board meeting, I had talked a little bit about the purpose of these two exemptions, why they were being considered. Procedurally, we are required to have a public hearing before the Board is able to even take action to consider these exemptions. So tonight is that night for the public hearing. I'm going to go through a very quick presentation, just to give you an overview of what these exemptions are, and why it is that we are recommending that the Board consider approval of these items. And there will be no action tonight, but we anticipate that at the next board meeting on the 27th, that we'll have it on there on the agenda for action. And in order to have this effective for the fall 2019 tax bills, action would need to be taken by March 1, which is the deadline within the state for these types of decisions. So there are several different classes of veterans exemptions that are written into real property tax law, and in the past, those were only available to eligible veterans on the January tax bills. There have been legislative actions by the state that has allowed school districts to opt into participating in some of those exemptions. So several years ago, the alternative veterans exemption was something that was newly available to schools, and we did the same process. We gathered the information, we quantified it, and had the public hearing, and the Board, in fact, adopted that for the September 2015 tax year. And the limitations were different than the levels that were in place at the town, but it was available to qualifying veterans. The legislation has just recently been changed as well, so now the Cold War exemption is something that we are able to consider and potentially adopt. The laws that define who is eligible are rather persnickety. There are specific dates of service where the veterans have had to have served in. They specify which combat events have to be served in, and if you fit into those defined categories and you meet the other qualifications within the law, you're able to get this exemption. So I had a gentleman call me a few weeks ago, and his question was, well, why can't I have the alternative veterans exemption? I'm a veteran, I served in these, I served actively for my country, and he certainly did not want to hear that because real property tax law was enacted, and you didn't fit into these specified dates, you weren't eligible for it. He was very confused by that, and I certainly don't fault him for that in the least, because it is a bit of a patchwork legislatively. The alternative exemption is a higher exemption, and the vast majority of the veterans on the town rolls for both Bethlehem and New Scotland are eligible for the alternative veterans exemption. There's a small pocket of veterans who would qualify for the Cold War exemption, so they are getting it at the town levels, but they are not able to get it at the school levels until this would be voted upon. You cannot have both of the exemptions. You would take the higher one that you're eligible for, which is typically the alternative veterans exemption. So whenever we consider these different exemptions, it does not affect at all the amount of money that the school district is able to raise via the tax levy. What the exemptions do effectively is give a benefit to those who are eligible for the exemption, and it means that the other taxpayers who aren't eligible for it end up picking up a piece of that exemption. So that's why there are public hearings, so that people have an opportunity to be aware of that. Typically, we've seen rising overall assessment levels, so the figures that I'm going to give you tonight are worst-case scenarios in terms of the impacts that would be felt. It might not even be felt at all if the assessment levels continue to go up. It essentially just gets absorbed in with the other changes. For the Cold War exemption, it is limited to your primary residents. There is a choice within the statutes. You can either have a 10% exemption or a 15%. Because both Bethlehem and New Scotland have adopted the 15% exemption, it's our recommendation that the school district also adopt at the 15% level. That's 15% of the assessed value, subject to dollar maximums. There's also a 50% exemption for any service-connected disabilities, and again, there are dollar limits that are applicable to that. Equalization rates, so if we adopt at, say, $6,000, and the equalization rate is not at 100%, say it's at 95%, the actual exemption would be 6,000 times .95 in order to come up with the maximum amount. So that's a calculation that's done at the assessment level, but I did want to highlight that in case somebody's wondering why the amount might not match exactly. When we adopted the alternative veterans exemption three years ago now, we did not adopt it at the same limits that were in place at the town levels. The town has much higher levels in place than what we recommended. The tax rates at the town levels were much lower. So even though our dollar amounts are lower because the tax rates are higher, it doesn't end up being a substantial difference in terms of the total benefit. It's a little bit less than what the veterans would have on their town taxes, but it would still be a, a nice benefit for them based on the limits. The Cold War exemption is structured similar to what was on the alternative veterans exemption. Again, it would be 15% for wartime service in those periods that are defined within the statute, plus up to 50% of their disability rating. The maximum amounts that we're recommending is 6,000 for the wartime and 20,000 for the disability. Again, different than the limits that are in place at the town, but because of the differing levels of the tax rates, would still yield a benefit that's comparable to those town To give you an idea of the numbers that we're talking about, currently, for the Cold War exemptions, we have 70 who, 70 residents within the town of Bethlehem who are qualified for the 15% level. There are only four who qualify for the 50% of the disability rating amounts. For New Scotland, there are only four residents who qualify for the 15%. You can see the exemption amounts on the rolls are much higher at the town level because their dollar amounts are higher. What we're talking about for the school is much lower with the $6,000 and $20,000 limits. So for the average veteran who would qualify for this, they would see around $6,700 worth of exemption benefits, and 6,000 for New Scotland. Okay. The benefit that would flow through the veterans would be about $126 based on these limitations. So not huge, but certainly something that would flow to their, their benefit. The amount that would be picked up by other taxpayers who did not have this, based on the current rates, for a $250,000 home, it would be about a dollar additional. So it's really a rather insignificant amount for the other taxpayers, yielding a nicer benefit for those who have served and who would qualify for this. It's a public hearing, so there will be opportunity to comment. Okay. Um, let me go back. So, again, we will have the comments following this presentation. I did have some calls from several veterans. I had also had a call from Mr. Anson, who was representing the American Legion, who spoke in favor of these exemptions, and we, I'm sure, will have other comments this evening on that. The second exemption that we're asking the Board to consider and to get public comment on is essentially a remedy to cut through some red tape. We have had this exemption on the school tax rolls and on the town rolls for many years, we believe since the 1980s, but the county must have been doing some kind of a review or an audit, and had requested copies of the formal resolutions, and neither the town nor the school was able to produce the proof that they had had a public hearing back in the 80s. And they have said that they're going to remove that exemption if it is not re-adopted. So this affects very few homeowners. This exemption essentially gives anybody who's physically disabled, they can submit the costs that they have incurred to modify their home, to adapt it based on their disability. And we have six homeowners in Bethlehem who have been granted exemptions of about $148,000, two in New Scotland at about $138,000. These are very, very small. You wouldn't even have an impact. We go out six decimal places with our taxes, so to remove this wouldn't be felt, but certainly to, it would be felt by the people who are benefiting from this if it was removed. So again, it is our recommendation that that be approved as well. So this is an opportunity. I don't know if the Board has any questions initially, or if you'd like me to, if we can open it up for public comment.
Why don't we open it up?
Open it up.
If you could come up to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Hello. My name is Steve Corson. I've been a resident of the town since 75. And I'd like to say that it's not what the veteran does today, it's what he or she did 50 years ago.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment?
Hi, my name's Heather Spitzberg. I live in Slumberland with my twins, who are in 5th grade at Slumberland, and my husband, Sam Spitzberg, who is a veteran of Iraq. He wanted to come here tonight to comment on this proposal, but he could not, so I'm here. We are strongly in support of offering this tax incentive to the Cold War veterans. Mrs. Kehoe did an amazing job of trying to explain the very intricate veterans laws, which I think most people are shocked by when they first learn how not... think most people are shocked by when they first learn how not all veterans are treated the same under the laws in terms of what benefits they get. And we feel very strongly, especially about the Cold War tax exemption, even though it may not seem like a lot of money, you know, these are our grandparents, our kids' grandparents. And any little bit that helps them be able to afford to stay in town is a good amount. And there's also value to having veterans in our town to talk about experiences and share what they have been through. And so, we would strongly encourage the school board to adopt this provision. So, thank you for considering it.
Good evening. My name's Scott Anson. I talked to Judy on the phone before. Somebody may know me. I graduated here in 1979. I've lived in Bethlehem my whole life. I worked for the town for 35 years. That's how I know Judy. I'm also the chairman of the board of the American Legion in Delmar. I represent about 40, or 400 veterans that live in the town of Bethlehem. And with this exemption, you're expanding to veterans that don't get the war or combat or disabled veterans exemptions. So, we fully support it, even though it's not a huge dollar amount. Less than 10% of the population serves in the military, but without them, we wouldn't be free. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all the veterans who came out and spoke.
Here, here. Okay, next we will have the State of the Schools address by our superintendent, Jody Monroe.
It's a pleasure to be here presenting our annual State of the Schools update. During the presentation this evening, I'll be focusing on strategic planning process, the results of our school climate surveys, and how these will help to guide our budget development as we begin planning for the 2019-20 school year. So, I'd like to begin with our school climate survey. This was administered in December. It was administered to students in grades 5 through 12, parents, and staff. I'll begin by highlighting some of the questions directly from the survey that were positive, and also those that were rated less favorably and will help guide some of our work. So, to begin with, in looking at some of the positive responses from the survey, we had 94% of our students say there are lots of chances for engagement in school activities. 89% reported feeling safe at school. 82% said they're happy to be at school, feel socially accepted, and about 89% say teachers are available when they need to talk. In regards to some of the positive responses from our teachers, 97% reported feeling safe. 96 reported students have lots of opportunity to be engaged. 95% say that people at the school care about them as a person, they feel like they belong. And 94% say the school inspires them to do their very best jobs. From our non-instructional staff, 98% say students get along well with staff. 95% believe school's an inviting work environment. They feel safe at school. 94% say that staff always stop bullying when they see it, and 91% reported feeling like they belong. And from our parent responses, 97% say the school looks clean and pleasant. The school notifies parents or guardians effectively in the case of school-wide emergencies. 90% say the school takes effective measures to ensure safety. And 85% say their child feels safe at school. 84% of parents say they feel welcome at school. Some of the more negative responses that, again, help to drive our work. In regards to students, 65% of them do not feel the temperature in the building is comfortable all year round. This is, we've heard this before. 65% do not feel other students stop and think before doing anything when they get angry. 55% don't feel that students are able to talk about the importance of understanding their own feelings or those of others. And 53% reported that students often spread mean rumors or lies about others on social media. Teachers, some of the more negative responses, 54% said they feel their work is hindered by poor heating or cooling or lighting. 51% good thing Greg's here tonight. 51% think that cyberbullying is a frequent problem among students, and 34% believe, or do not believe there are effective resources and training for teaching students with individual education plans with E&amp;L needs as well. So, that's a smaller population, but certainly one that is challenging. Some of the more negative responses from our support staff, 38% do not believe administrators ask staff to be involved in decision-making. 33% think that, again, cyberbullying is a frequent problem among students, and 28% of support staff feel their work is hindered by heating, cooling, or lighting. And from our parents, 57% don't feel that when their child does something good at school, they usually hear about it. 36% do not feel the school helps them figure out what social and emotional skills their child needs to develop, and 24% would like to see that students don't have enough healthy food choices. So, in addition to some of the specific questions, we also received thousands, and I mean thousands of comments, on the survey, and I know many of you got a chuckle out of some of them. So, listed in the next couple of slides are the most prevalent comments that we received. So, if you look, again, this was grade 5 through 12. Some better healthier food, better cleaner bathrooms, again, temperature, identifying less bullying or more intervention with bullying. Lunch and recess time is always big with elementary students, nicer lunch aids, we've seen that before, and consistency in all the levels, favoritism of girls over boys, or inequity between how girls and boys are treated. Some of the different high school parking lot issues, we always hear about the parking lot. Some of the start school later, there were many comments about that from kids and parents. High school was, one of the big comments, had to do with vaping and concerns about the amount of vaping going on in bathrooms particularly. Some of the dress code issues, the middle school iReady is not real popular. And more communications between departments were some of the more prevalent comments, just to spread out some of the homework and testing that students have to manage. Some of our comments from parents, more consistent communication, that seemed to be consistent across all levels, more regular communication. Again, some of the comments between girls and boys and some perception or variation on how they're treated, how to deal with better student behavior issues, and some comments related to diversity and bias. There were definitely some comments about starting school times, and also some comments regarding focusing on all students, not just our high-achieving students, to make sure that we're addressing all of our students' needs, and some comments related to transitions as well. In some of our overall staff surveys, again, heating and cooling issues were the biggest comments. Allowing teachers more time for communication, which goes along with some of the parent comments about not, wanting better communication. A lot of the communication had to do from parents with comments about not knowing where to go for some of the communication in regards to teachers using Aspen versus teachers using Google Classroom versus teachers using other sites. It gets somewhat confusing. Foster greater unity, communication across departments and building, a need for some more mental health training and resources, and addressing student behavior issues for all students. So, in reviewing some of the surveys, what became apparent in general, and this slide is highlighting some of that, is that students reported having more positive relationships with the adults they interact with than they do with their peer groups. This was consistent across all grade levels, 5th grade, middle school, and high school. Looking at school safety, which has been a priority for the district, students and staff report feeling safe at school, and also report feeling confident they know how to respond in the case of an emergency. However, one distinguishing difference was that our instructional staff, you can see from this slide, feels more confident in their ability to deal with an emergency than our support staff does. So, that tells us that we need to try and include our support staff more in trainings. Sometimes it's a matter of them being available or not, but that's an area that we need to focus on. Through the strategic planning process, we also identified a need to improve in the area of equity and diversity. We do have established a district equity committee, and we've also been working with our staff to improve training on diversity and bias in our hiring practices. You can see that this slide shows that we need to do more in helping students to respect differences. In looking at students at this school are teased or picked on, you can see that there's a decent percentage of students that are, deal with this because of mental or physical disabilities, sexual orientation, race or ethnicity, or cultural backgrounds. Before I move on, though, to our strategic planning process, I want to talk about our survey and the next steps. We have been doing a lot of review of the data. It is a lot of data, and it helps to reinforce some of the work we've already begun. So, we'll continue to do that at our buildings and with our staffs. And then also, it will help to identify what resources we need as we move forward with our budget process. But the next part of this presentation, I want to go into how this ties into some of our strategic planning, and we do have members of our planning committee here, but I want to just pause to see if any board members have any questions or comments on the climate surveys or anything that I just spoke about.
I have a question regarding the slide you just showed about people feeling they're being teased or picked on based on differences.
Yep.
And we also got a slide in the more detailed information regarding people of different cultural backgrounds, whether or not they get along at the school. And that, in that question, 90% of the students said that they thought people of different cultural backgrounds got along at the school. And I was wondering if we have a breakdown of those answers based on the person who's giving the answer, their racial background or ethnic background? Because if we have a majority of white students saying that they feel like they get along, I'm wondering if we have the same responses within different cultural groups.
Sure. So, that's one of the areas where, are doing a more breakdown of that data, in addition to the gender, the girls and the boys, to see if they responded to some of those questions differently. Did girls respond differently to a few of those questions than boys did? In same, in this situation, if you take the ethnicity people indicated, now, they could be multiple, but in looking at, I think there's five or six questions that coincide with that, did those groups respond differently to those questions than as a whole?
Right.
In some of them, it's such a small percentage, it's probably going to be hard to see, but there are, in some of the subcategories, there are some higher percentages that would show if they're responding any differently. Because that does make a difference as to how overall they're responding versus how someone who may be Hispanic in origin responds to those questions.
So, you are doing that breakdown?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Jody, you had, one of the slides indicated that iReady was not popular, and we had a presentation about iReady where it seemed that the, those presenting to us thought that it was a really wonderful program. So, I was wondering if there was anything more in the comments that gave us an indication as to why it's not popular, and is that something, an area that we're going to be looking at?
So, this is an area we are looking at, at the middle school this year? This is the first year that we've really instituted a homework policy using the instructional platform. So, this is our second year of iReady. Last year, our main focus was on having the students use the diagnostic assessments. They took those three times a year, and we really didn't put much focus on the instructional platform because we wanted to get through the system itself for a year. This year, there's more emphasis on using the instructional platform to fill in the holes that are identified through the diagnostic assessment. And so, this is the first year, students are expected to do a set number of lessons to fill in those holes, and they're not happy with the extra amount of work because they feel like they already have math homework, so now why do they have to do this additional homework? So, we are looking at, you know, is the amount that we're asking them to do appropriate? So, again, it's our first year of implementation, so there are some bumps. The elementary level, the feedback has been a little bit more positive, especially at the younger grades. As the kids get a little older, it starts to diminish. So, I think as students start at a younger age using the system and are used to it, then it will become part of what they're used to doing. Whereas for middle school students, again, this is, it's brand-new to have to do this extra work as they perceive it, so there's some negative connotation with that.
Do you expect, do you expect that over time, the amount of homework would go down with this system, that it wouldn't be, in their perception, additional homework? Because one of the complaints we often hear is that students have entirely too much homework.
For sure. And we are looking at having a different tiered system. So, in other words, so right now, everyone basically has the same expectation of the number of lessons they have to do. So, we're looking at other models where if you're performing below grade level, you'd have a set expectation for number of lessons. If you're on grade level, that would be much less, and if you're above grade level, maybe you wouldn't have an expectation. But the idea is, you know, the purpose of iReady is to identify gaps in students' learning. So, it's sort of above and beyond what's happening in the day-to-day instruction, and it's very difficult to perform well on new material if you still have substantial gaps in old material. So, while students might look at it as extra work, it actually allows them to better tackle the new work because it fills in the holes that is preventing them from doing the new work. But it's something that we're certainly monitoring, and we're making adjustments over time to make sure that it is meeting the best needs of our students and our teachers for that matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, moving on to our strategic planning process, I would like to thank some of the members of the committee who are here this evening. Some are sitting behind me. Kathy Ray, Kate and Diana, our administrators who served on the committee. I also saw Hope, right? Hope Pearlman was on the committee, and Charmaine Widge singer was on the committee. Is anyone else here hiding somewhere? So, we began this process back in August 2017, and the goal of, we concluded this past fall. The charge of the group was to review the district's mission statement, goals, long-term planning. So, through the concerted effort of all of our representatives, which even though there's only a few here tonight, you can see the group was made up of a large number of people throughout that process, we received a large number of responses also to a community survey, as well as other community outreach. And through that process, we were able to develop an updated mission statement, core values, that we believe reflect the current and future priorities of the district. So, again, this just highlights the timeframe. We began back in August of 2017, and you can see the steps we took along the way in regards to surveying, feedbacking. We did have a community forum where we had a decent participation as well. And here we are now, at the finish line, so to speak, although it's never really finished, in presenting this information. So, the mission statement the group came up with to replace our current mission statement is to educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be... and be engaged community members. The core values, which would replace currently what we have as knowledge, character, and value, would be academics, character, community, and wellness. For academics, we identified instructional and assessment practices that are aligned to a strong and relevant curriculum. Character, positive character traits are essential to becoming contributing members of society. Community, strengthening family, school, and community partnerships through transparent communication. And finally, wellness, enhancing social, emotional wellness and balance for students and staff by supporting active, healthy lifestyles and promoting positive behavior. So based upon the mission statement and the core values, the instructional leadership team worked collaboratively to determine where our emphasis should be in each of these areas. This work was based on feedback from the survey, as well as the discussions from the strategic planning committee, as well as the data that the instructional team reviewed. These goals, which one of them you're seeing right now, and I'll go through in a minute, were then brought back to the strategic planning committee, and from there, the action plans and metrics were developed that we use for our planning for the future. So in these next few slides, I'm going to highlight some of the specific goals and strategies to reach our goals. So under academics, you can see our first goal, instructional and assessment practices are aligned to strong and relevant curriculum. We have identified some of the overarching themes on top, some of the major strategies, such as conducting program reviews, closing achievement gaps, fully implementing academic and behavior response to intervention, innovative, rigorous, and engaging instructional technology in providing professional learning experience for teachers in areas such as project-based learning, technology, and cultural proficiency. In some of our strategies, just to highlight some of how this aligns as we work through this year, for example, in our program reviews, we're currently conducting them in science, art, and physical education. Reviews of music, health, SESS, and CTE were already completed in the past. In closing the achievement gap, one of the strategies that we did this year was to implement a summer program for at-risk students transitioning from grade eight to nine, about elective courses, and offering team-building activities with the goal of getting them engaged in something as they enter high school. For our RTI programs, we did launch our response to intervention behavior. This year, we offered additional training for special area teachers, service providers, and support staff, and is ongoing, and transitioning into the middle school. In regards to instructional technology, we have data to show that 39% of teachers are using Google Classroom on a regular basis. We currently offer 37 different instructional software programs for use in the classroom that are available to students and teachers. And we talked about project-based learning. You saw a little bit of this at one of our recent board presentations about the Smithsonian and the K-5 science kits, that real hands-on learning that excites students and engages them. In looking at character, some of our major strategies are obviously professional development to promote equity and inclusion for all students, incorporating programs to promote and inform students about school activities, again, that student engagement, age-appropriate character education program at all levels, and again, extracurricular participation for students. In looking at our strategies, to give you an idea of what that looks like this year, again, I mentioned the building equity committee. We have four meetings this year to talk about professional development and training for our staff on cultural responsiveness. We have over 35 faculty and administrators from all buildings who are representatives on that committee. Strategy number two, looking at the electives fair, which was held at the high school to help students learn about what opportunities are available, and trying to, again, reach out to students to become engaged in some activity within the buildings. In supporting character education program, we started, and we've mentioned this before, working together with counseling staff and teachers to make character education a seamless part of our culture at all the levels. And strategy four, and looking at how do we involve students in extracurricular activity, middle school has been doing some student leadership committees, such as No Place For Hate, Student Corps, Peer Tutoring, Garden Club, and we have improved our attendance rates from last year to this year, and I'll show you some metrics on some of that in a minute. Just looking at a quick video.
Bethlehem is no place for hate.
This is an example of one of our clubs.
It means making a promise. It means respect.
We're speaking out against prejudice and discrimination.
And gaining an understanding of those who are different.
Fending up for human rights.
At Bethlehem, we're upstanders, not bystanders.
We support people who have been targets of hate.
And we promote respect for all people.
No Place For Hate is a club, but more importantly, a culture.
It's embraced at the high school and middle school.
We are creating a unified community.
In which everyone feels safe and included.
And that spirit of inclusiveness can be found throughout the district.
On October 1st, everybody K through 12.
Chose to wear blue in a pledge against bullying.
The walls of the middle school cafeteria are covered with students declaring their "My Good Fight."
On the windows of the high school, the student population celebrates.
Several global holidays.
That's because Bethlehem is no place for prejudice.
Bethlehem is no place for bullying.
Bethlehem is no place for discrimination.
Bethlehem is no place.
No place, no place.
No place.
Bethlehem is no place for hate.
Moving forward with community, some of our major strategies are engaging with our community partners, trying to expand opportunities for our students, talking to stakeholders and dialogue about our priorities in the district, developing systems for outreach and advocacy for all of our families, improving opportunities for family mentoring programs who need assistance, and providing workshops and resources for our families and community members. To give some examples of that, we meet regularly with the Chamber of Commerce. There is a new president who is very receptive to working with the school and making those connections between community businesses and students. Our SESS department has begun some outreach to parents, reestablishing the parent advisory group to provide more engagement with parents of students with disabilities. Advocacy for students, faculty, staff, and students all collaborated to offer an onsite dinner and childcare in the fall during the middle and high school open houses. And families who face hardship, we have every year, and we continue to expand the holiday caring and sharing drive as well. You hear frequently about it, the weekend backpack program, which we have been expanding to a little bit different service, but in the middle school as well this year. And expanding parent resources and workshops, early in the fall, we did a short parent survey to find out what programs they were most interested in that we could provide to help. And the college workshops were a priority, but also, they identified some others, on one being on digital citizenship, which we have scheduled for parents in March, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. And finally, wellness, the whole-school, whole-child community approach is a model we've been using for a few years now, providing programs that strengthen the emotional and physical wellness of students and staff. A little stat up there. Is that my cue? I'm supposed to wrap it up? Implementing the K-12 social-emotional curriculum, professional development about the understanding of health, wellness, and safety, and improving student and staff attendance through the implementation of a multi-tiered RTI model. So we have a lot of information on our website about the whole-child model and some of the initiatives we have for some of our wellness. We had our department offered a holiday stress reliever for our faculty and staff to learn about getting crafty with the art department, which was a great event and good turnout. The social-emotional learning curriculum are done by our elementary counselors and are continuing through the middle school. The zones of regulation, if you have students in the elementary, you probably hear some of their sayings they use quite often. Professional development, we are beginning to introduce, and there will be notification going out, the Raptor Visitor Management System, where visitors will be required to show an ID. We'll be piloting that at three of our schools, in the high school, middle school, and Glenmont, to see how that works, and then hopefully expand that to our other buildings. And we also have an attendance subcommittee focusing on particularly chronic absenteeism, students who we continue to struggle with. We're looking at research-based approaches. Our school nurses have really done a lot of work in this area, and it's been very helpful in getting the word out and the message about the importance of being at school. So of course, data is important in helping us to determine what we need to focus on and how we plan to improve in these particular areas. So this is just a snapshot of the long list. We actually identified 72 distinct metrics from the administrative team that we'll be tracking over the next five years. There's 10 key measures, which I'll highlight in just a minute, and this was dealt, these metrics were developed, again, by the administrative team in conjunction with the strategic planning committee. And you can see, we started with the baseline data, and there, this will be available on our website and will be part of some of the communication we put out. We started with baseline data. Some of that data we're gathering this year because we don't have it, and we set targets for improvement for the next several years. So in these upcoming slides, when the strategic planning committee was working on this, we felt like 72 indicators might be a little much for people to really grasp. So we thought that we would identify eight to 10 that we felt the community would really value and want to see what our goals were. So these are those key indicators that the group identified as being important to the community. So we started with reading in grade three, and the research shows that grade three is a key turning point for students reading on grade level, and we want all of our students to be at that point. So our baseline is 70%. That's a combination, a combined measure of our F and P levels, Fountas and Pennell, our iReady scores, and our grade-three New York State ELA assessment. So it's not perfect, but we felt it was a better measure than just one measure. So you can see, our baseline is currently 70%. And over the next five years, our goal would be to at least get to 85% and hopefully higher. Our graduation rate, although we do very well across New York State and the capital region, our baseline is generally around 94%. We would like to see, and this, you know, could be aspirational, and we may never get there, but we believe that we want all of our students to graduate from high school. So we set our goal at 100% in the next five years. And looking at percent of the high school students, we have a great AP participation rate at our baseline. 52% of our high school students take at least one AP course. We believe that more of our students could take an AP course and be very successful. So our goal over time is to improve that to 80%. And then we looked at some of our Regents exams, and looking at passing is not much of a goal for us because most of our students pass. We have very few students who fail. So we felt that it was more important to look at our mastery levels and how do we improve those. So for example, in our English Language Arts, our Regents exam, our baseline is 79%. Our goal would be, over the next five years, to have our mastery at 85%. Similarly, for algebra, we would like to see the same. Our baseline is lower in that, but again, comparatively across districts, that's, unfortunately, that's not unusual. Our baseline is 47%, and you can see, this is a pretty high goal, that over the next five years, our mastery would be at 70%. And the next one, we have a lot of students, grade nine is a real critical year for high school students, and in order to be on track for graduation, students should have, leave ninth grade with six credits. That would show that they're on track for graduation. Currently, we have about 90% of our grade-nine students at 90%. We would like to see that at 100% within four years. We've talked a lot about being engaged in school, and we know that students who are engaged in some activity are more engaged and more likely to do well, and more likely to do well after they leave Bethlehem. So our baseline currently, based on our data that we received, is 77%, which is a great number. We would like to see at least 90%. We'd like to see all of our students, but we believe that with some concerted effort and more expanded opportunities, we could get about 90% of our students engaged in at least one activity in the next several years. And school safety and having students feel as if they belong in school, our baseline based on the school climate survey was 81%. Again, 100% may be aspirational, but we believe that it's important that kids feel like they belong here and they want to be here in school. So our goal is 100% in the next several years. Community service, again, we've talked about the importance of students feeling engaged in the community, so we don't have that baseline data yet, so our goal is to establish that this year. And then you can see from that, we may adjust that, but right now, we believe we would increase that about 16% over the next several years. Percent of voters voting in favor of the district budget, we have great turnout, we have great support, and we appreciate that. Currently, we're at 81%, and we would like to see that in the next few years to go up to about 85%. So before I move on from the strategic planning process and kind of transition us into our next phase with the enrollment and moving into the budget, are there any questions on the strategic planning process or the data that I presented? And I certainly would ask if any members of the strategic planning committee wanted to comment or talk about what a wonderful experience it was. Feel free to do so as well.
I had a couple of questions just about the, a couple of the slides that you just showed with the key measures. With the community service, is that aimed at high school only, middle school too?
It would be aimed at middle and high school. So we, we've been using Passport For Good for a little bit of tracking. We are, we did just sign an agreement to use that for our six-through-12 program, and that will give us better data to track middle and high school students on what community service they're doing. We have some requirements in community service, but our goal, we think, we have a lot of kids who are doing community service that we don't know about. So we would like to collect that baseline, and we believe that using Passport For Good, we can do that, so it's more reliable. And then from there, we would like to see that increase over the next several years.
Is the idea to measure how many students are completing a certain number of hours of community service, or how many are doing it at all?
We, we would like to, I think, see how, start with how many students are actually participating in community service. Because we also don't want it to be, "I'm doing my 20 hours because I have to." Instead, that students find value in doing things for the community, or they find something that they like doing, and they continue to do it. So our goal is to see how many students we can get involved in some level of community service.
And then the other question I had was about the Algebra I measure. Does that include the middle school students that take the Algebra Regents?
That's middle and high school.
Middle and high school.
I want to thank everybody who served on the committee. They've done great work here. I just had a question about the slide that said that 39% of the staff's currently using Google Classroom.
Yep.
Is that about where we thought we would be? Is it, are we hoping to increase that?
Really, this last year is when really teachers started using Google Classroom. David, do you want to add?
Well, I was going to say, that also, that captures all teachers K-12.
K-12.
So I think if we looked at a more specific breakdown, and maybe like grades three through five, and then six through eight, and seven, nine through 12, I think you'd see much higher percentages as the grade bands move up. So that is something that we're going to look deeper at in terms of grade level usage, not just overall.
I have a question about the Raptor visitor management. I have a question about the Raptor visitor management. We're in a situation in the country where we have concerns about undocumented individuals. And I'd be concerned that, I don't know if we have any students in the school, and I really don't want to know, that might fall there, but I'd be concerned if they could not, or their parents could not get a government-issued ID. And if that would create a barrier. And do we have a plan to address that issue?
Well, on our initial rollout, we're letting people know that this does require a government-issued ID, but recognizing that people are going to show up without that. We can manually enter an individual in the system and then we're going to ask them to, when they come again, to bring that. But certainly, if there's a situation like that, we, the principals generally know about that, so we would deal with that on an individual basis.
And not leave a record?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had had to do with voters voting in the district and the measure was voting in favor of the district budget. And I'm wondering, given the fact that our voting, our voters in total have been going down, number of people showing up at the polls have been on a sharp downward trend for quite some time, if the goal should not be more in favor of getting more people to the polls? And I think in that way, we would also achieve this goal as well.
Sure, that's a good point. I think we talked about that, didn't we, the communications, about trying to get more people coming out as well. Part of that is marketing, part of it is, I mean, always creating an issue, that always works, but we prefer not to do that. But trying to remind people and find ways to attract them and hope for good weather is always helpful.
I just wanted to say, I don't have any questions. It's unusual. I just wanted to thank the strategic planning committee. I know this was a lot of time and commitment and dedication and we started it a while ago. And I think that, that we got a great mission statement, some nice goals, and there was a lot of detail. And I'm really happy with the product, so thank you.
Did any of the members want us?
We just think I'm a community member. I was a member of the strategic planning committee. And I just want to thank the district. I think they put together a very diverse group of people. There were faculty, staff, administrators, parents, board members on it. I don't know if there were any students. There were, okay. 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 So maybe an area for improvement next year, next time. But I think it really allowed for a rich and diverse discussion. We didn't always agree. I don't want people to get the impression that we are, it was always a smooth discussion. I think sometimes people spoke passionately about areas that they felt passionate about. And, but it was always done in an area, an idea of respect and listening to each other. And I think, hopefully, the product is something that's very useful to the district. Lynn Lenhart used to tell a story about the last time a mission statement was done and how community members were kept in the room for a day or a weekend. We didn't quite have that process, but I'm hoping that the result is something that's very, something the district can use. And before I end, I'd like to appreciate Ms. Monroe, Ms. Gardner, and Ms. Barrett because they did an incredible amount of work keeping us prepared before meetings, keeping the meetings going, and then summarizing all the results and preparing us for the next meeting. So a huge amount of work went into it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Hope Pearlman. I was honored to serve on the strategic planning committee. And I just wanted to say that I was very impressed, as I always am when I'm in the room with teachers and administrators and the community members, by the commitment that everyone shows to our children. It really is always inspiring.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Heather?
First, I want to echo what Board Member Fishbein had to say about the documentation. I really hope that the school puts into place a policy that doesn't put any of our parents or our students in jeopardy that way.
Sure.
The question, one other comment I have and then a question. There was a point about emphasizing not missing school and how important, how that can affect performance. And I agree that that's completely important. That being said, I don't want to see it go the other way where kids are going to school sick. I, I know, I, my son has had an unusual number of absences this year due to sicknesses. And we got a letter home saying he's missed this many days and if there's anything we can do to help you, please let us know. And, and I was, you know, happy to see the school's paying attention to him not being there, but there was really nothing, that he was sick. And I, you know, we, we're not the kind of family that forces our kids to go to school when they're not feeling well, but I can see some families might, like, feel the stress that their kids have to go. So I would search for that balance. And the question I had was about the graduation rates. How is that measured?
It's, well, it's through a cohort. So who starts in ninth grade and then who finishes with your cohort? Although now, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, there's several different calculations that they'll take into account. A five-year cohort if students graduate, meaning they may go through summer school, they may have IEPs where they're here longer. And then there's even going to be a six-year if they finish. So it's a little more favorable, but in general, in the past, graduation has been counted as a four-year cohort, meaning you start in ninth grade and you finish with your senior year, 12th grade.
Okay. That was my concern, because I know that there are students who through IEPs and such, take longer to finish.
Right. Right. And we've always tracked those students, so we, typically, the state report was always lower than what we would account for, if, for example, if students needed to finish in August or January. Now, under the new accountability, it actually is a little more favorable for those students.
Okay. Obviously, the district has a very favorable rating, so I applaud everyone.
Thank you. Okay. And finally, just quickly to look at enrollment and leading into the budget process. As you can see, the projections for enrollment continue to show some decline through 2023, 24. Projected numbers we have received from the Capital District Planning Commission have been reliable to date. This is the third, third year, I believe, we've used them for our data. The unknown factor is always, of course, the amount of housing turnover and development. So we do continue to work with the town to look at that. In looking at the current enrollment for 1819, you can see our enrollment is, I think we were one student different from what the planning commission had provided us last year. In looking forward for 1920, I think our enrollment will be very similar and our number of teachers will be the same. There might be a slight shift. Hammer Girl's up a little bit and Eagle and Slingerland's is down, but I think our, the numbers we have will be very consistent. And mentioning with our work with the town, so these are the current approved major, the major single-family residential subdivisions. And you can see, we do verify this with the town, looking at where we are currently and what's the expected completion rate of those homes over the next several years out through 2023.
Can I say this real quick?
Sure.
Like, I see the enrollment numbers up there, but I also, just in my opinion, I just also worry because I also see what we're building in town. So it's like, I struggle with it sometimes because, no, I'm not saying demographers wrong. I have no degree in any of this. But I also drive around town and see, you know, what's going on over on Bender and other places. And it's, I'm not sure if my eyes and the numbers always come together.
Well, in speaking with the planning commission and the town, even though they may be building a lot of more single-family homes, they're not necessarily marketing that to families with children. They're marketing to senior citizens, they're marketing to diverse groups. So I'm not saying that families with children will not move in. But we also had a high of enrollment at one point of 5,200. And we're well, you know, down way past that. So we definitely have plenty of capacity to handle some growth if we have it.
Yeah, just, it's just keeping, you know, I think it's like, seeing those numbers, okay, we can, we can make some, some thoughts on these numbers, but in the back of our mind, you know?
Right.
There's got to be a what-if, if that goes the other way.
And in regards to the budget, obviously, our goal is to always have a balanced budget, as Judy always says, expenses equals revenue, and that makes her very happy.
Every year on the third Tuesday in May, people across New York State vote on their local school budgets. School budgets pay for everything and everyone that make education possible in your community. Schools need people to drive buses, serve food, clean buildings, and yes, teach its students, which is why, on average, 77% of New York State school budgets pay for salaries and benefits. The rest of the budget pays for other things students need to learn, like textbooks, desks, and microscopes, but also fuel for buses, cleaning supplies, heat, and electricity. Where does the money come from to pay for local education? School districts primarily get their money from two sources, state aid and local property taxes. It's an investment that pays off with an educated workforce, more vibrant local communities, and a stronger economy. Ultimately, voters have the final say on school budgets when they head to the polls on that third Tuesday in May. To learn more before you cast your vote, check your local district website or stop by a school board meeting.
I knew Judy would like that video. So over the course of the last several years, you can see that we've had an annual increase in our budgets of just over 1.5%. You can see a little dip and rise, but overall, our costs, our budgets have been very small increments over the last 10 years. Looking at the tax levy, again, you can see that one year, back in 1213, was the only year we went over the tax cap, which required a supermajority every year. Since then, we've been under that and the last couple of years have been significantly below that cap. Looking at Bethlehem compared to other districts, we do spend about $20,000 per pupil. You can see the average across the state is a little over 23. And if you compare that cost to similar districts, meaning similarly in demographics and size, we're about $6,000 less than most districts. And again, this is just a visual to show where we've gone up in the last several years. So over the last five years, we've gone up just over $3,000 per student. And before I turn it over to Judy to do a quick budget overview as we begin our process, are there any final questions or comments the board may have? Thank you.
Thank you. This is just to get the anticipation and excitement to build before we talk about budget. Here we go. So this will be a quick overview of our 1920 budget. For the last few years, we have been structurally balanced. We have, as Ms. Monroe had mentioned, had a culture of cost containment. Even though our revenues have not been growing by leaps and bounds, we've been able to get to a balanced budget. And we haven't had any really incredibly difficult decisions to be made to get us there. So that will be the continued theme for this year. Not to worry, even though value didn't make it into the final strategic plan for the pillars of the district moving forward, part of the reason that came off is because it's just so intrinsic in all that we do. It's the focus of all of our discussions and really during the budget time is when that all comes to the forefront. We started our review of the budget for next year by looking at the governor's budget proposal. That really is an indicator of what to expect. We were not expecting any significant changes in the aid, and in fact, that was the case. So the formulas have remained essentially the same. And when I show you the next slide with the totals that we're projecting, it's virtually flat with a slight increase going into the coming year. One of the changes that you will see is actually from legislation from the prior years, and this is the Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESSA. Now you know why we call it ESSA. There are some transparency requirements and those are being phased in. Based on Bethlehem's size, those requirements apply to us for this current fiscal year where we will have to report out all of our actual costs and revenues by building. And then as we're building our budget for 1920, you'll see it's also broken out by building. So if you look in your budget books or on the district's website where we release the detailed expenditure reports, the reports just got a whole lot longer because we had to break out all of the codes into the five elementary schools. So that has been a huge effort over the past few months as we were preparing for this. And that detail is there in the books. As we go through the coming weeks of budget review, you will see what that new model looks like, where we show the costs by building and then actually calculate a cost per pupil. And that is all to show that we are, in fact, equitably distributing our resources for the benefit of all students. There were some elements, however, in the governor's budget that we do want to watch closely. And the first one is where we have, a majority of our aid formulas mean that if we spend the money in year one, we get a reimbursement in year two. And right now, there are 11 different categories of aids. And what the governor has proposed is that those all get consolidated into services aid. Now simplicity is a beautiful thing and to bring some more streamlined reviews of state aid or how we manage that would be very welcome. But the concern being, if we tie those future increases to inflation and enrollment numbers, our costs are not often aligned with inflation. They're certainly aligned with enrollment numbers, but if this results in reductions in aid, that could cause issues that we would need to respond to in later years. Additionally, one of the changes that was proposed was to change the 10% building aid incentive that districts currently get to a lower percent. Essentially, they want to distribute that away from the higher wealth, lower need districts to other districts that have greater need. So we may see reductions in our building aid ratios going forward. And later in our presentations, you will see a recommendation to create another capital reserve. One, because of this potential change. And two, because the existing capital reserve that we have is almost at its maximum. When that was approved by the public and the board several years ago, it was capped at $10 million and we're approaching that $10 million cap. So that will be something that we'll talk about further in the budget review cycle. So our state aid totals, we're going from just about $28 million up to 28.2. Once the budget is actually approved by the state, there may be some slight adjustments to these amounts. Obviously, we'll watch that carefully and come back to you if there are any additional revenues, but it essentially is status quo. And we did have an increase in our building aid percentage of about 1.6%. So that is part of the reason why that number is increasing. Those percentages change all the time. It could just as easily have gone down, but we're fortunate this year that it has risen. The tax cap calculation, this is something that we've had in place now for many years, it feels like anyway, where in order- it feels like anyway, where in order to determine how much money can be raised, all districts are required to go through a formula or a formulaic calculation. One of the elements is the tax base growth factor. So Mr. Meyer, to your point about growth in town, that's the measure of brick-and-mortar growth over the past year, so it's hardly a shock and awe number. It's at 1.46%. So that is one of the calculations that allows an increase in the levy amount. Similarly, that allowable levy growth factor at 2% is designed to measure inflation. The inflation rate was actually 2.44%, but the tax cap law limits the amount that we can raise to 2%. So that's why that number is lower. If we have payments in lieu of taxes, which we do, if those amounts go up, it lowers the amount that you can collect through your tax levy, and that change is about $100,000 this year. And then a larger impact is from the capital exemption, and that's related to some of the debt service costs that we will start to incur on the $32 million project that Mr. Nolte is going to talk about next. So the maximum allowable amount is, by this formula, 4.08%. That would yield just under $2.7 million in revenues. If you recall, last year, we had a maximum increase of about 3.95%, and our actual levy was well below that amount. So I certainly don't want to sow any seeds of concern in the community that we're proposing this as a tax levy. We're just reporting out as to what the calculation tells us is our statutory maximum. So for our total budgeted revenues in the baseline, we always roll that forward with the school tax levy at the exact same amount as last year. So that will be one of the decisions that we'll make as we balance the budget at the end of the review process as to how much we need in order to support the programs. Pilots, increasing about $100,000. State aid, as we talked about, close to flat, and similarly, other revenue. So we're looking at $99,469,000 for sources to fund our program. On the expenditure side, the increase in the baseline is 2.24%, so that's below the inflation rate. There's really very nominal growth in our salaries. That number that is increasing does not reflect any changes in the numbers of positions. That is just a reflection of the salary increases that will flow from the underlying labor agreements that we have. So that percentage increase is 2.39%, also relatively low increase. Fringe benefits, I have another slide to show you the details on that, but that's almost a stable number, and that is from low rates on health insurance and from decreased rates on our pension costs. Debt service is higher, and that reflects the bond interest expense on a short-term financing for the construction project. The BOSI services and the equipment supplies and contractual, it's kind of hard, when you roll up the numbers into this district-wide overview, to understand exactly what's in there and what those changes are. Not to worry, we will be presenting that as we go through the different areas in the coming weeks. And the transfers and the capital outlay amount are flat. So the baseline will be $100,998.
Do the salary number include breakage?
No, no. And that's something, breakage is the difference in the salaries between staff who retire after a very long career at Bethlehem. It's the difference between their salaries and the salaries of incoming staff. So we do have some retirements coming up, and that will be one of the numbers that will roll out down the road, and that will help lower that number even, you know, assuming there aren't any other offsetting increases in staff that ultimately get approved by the board. So fringe benefits, I'm very pleased to announce that on the health insurance, the increases is going to be about 4%. So that's the largest number of our fringe benefit costs, so the fact that we're in the low single digits is certainly positive for us. The TRS rates have not been finalized yet. It's going to be a range somewhere between 8.5% to 9.5%. In the baseline budget, we've used the higher number to be more conservative with it. That is a decrease from last year's rate. If the rate that is ultimately adopted by the teachers' pension system is lower, we'll be able to adjust that. We are set with the rate for the employees' retirement system, which is for our non-instructional staff, and that is down 0.3%. So again, with growth in salaries, that number is flat. Debt service payments, this just breaks out the total bonds and bond anticipation notes that we expect to have in place for prior projects that have been approved. This represents both the principal and the interest payments that are due on those bonds. The bond anticipation note, although we have not finalized the cash flow projections on that yet, we worked with our financial advisors to come up with that estimate of interest expense based on our draw in the coming year. The building aid, of course, is, this factors into that capital exemption line item on the maximum allowable tax levy caps. So if your debt service payments are increasing, that causes your tax levy calc to increase as well. Given that the debt was going up more so than the building aid, that is why that $520,000 figure is listed in the tax cap calc. This summary is, coincidentally, the same total as the other slide, the $100,998. But what this does is breaks out those totals between all of the different program areas so that you can get a sense that, as you would expect, the majority of our money is being spent on our faculty and instructional programs and also our special ed and other student services. The transportation and the O&M costs, we'll get into more details. That'll be at our next budget meeting, but those essentially benefit K-12, all students. The next few slides are to provide you with the information on the other areas that are in the budget that don't tend to change a lot from one year to the next, and they don't really get their own designated night to review the costs. But these are administrative costs that we wanted to at least flag for you so that you're aware that they're in there, even though we're not specifically addressing them. And you can see, there's really not a whole lot of change, but as you would expect, these are the support services that benefit the entire district. We have a number of, oh, go back?
Yeah, what does the Board of Education, the $44,000, what does that cover?
So because the Board of Education graciously serves without compensation, that line item primarily includes training that is provided to the board. So if there's, there are continuing professional education requirements for board members, the annual conferences or other training that either, you know, the New York State School Boards Association puts on, that's largely what that is. Your, the board docs system, where you keep track of all of your board meeting materials and reference material, is also in that line item. We have professional fees that the district pays as well. Our financial accounts are audited. We have attorneys who help us with various issues that we come upon. We, this insurance line is for our property and casualty and automobile coverage for us. Judgments and claims, we put back in for 1920 because we had some significant claims. They had been going down. We dropped it to zero last year, and in fact, it's coming in a few hundred thousand dollars. So we thought we might want to put a little bit more back in there this year for that. And then, these are the other, the last of the areas. We have some self-supporting programs for all of the continuing ed programs. I know those flyers just came out to the community in both the mail and on our website, and then Drivers Ed. All of those are covered with fees from the participants, though. And then the last general category are our transfers that go to the other funds for the extended school year summer programs, and then the capital outlay, which Mr. Nolte will talk about in the O&M presentation. So if you look at these baseline totals, we are going into the budget development with about a $1.5 million gap. A 2% tax levy is about $1.3 million. So again, you can see it's not a tremendous lift to be able to close that. We will look at the initial estimates and update any of those in the coming weeks. We will factor in the salary breakage that Mr. Fishbein had asked about, and then ultimately decide what levy is available. But this is pretty much right in line with our expectations. Recall each year, this is the slide from our May 2018 public hearing on the budget. We always do a multi-year forecast because we want to have a sense of what financial challenges may be coming our way, and we show that we are structurally balanced. So we're at $1,529 versus our projection last year of $1,439. So to be within $100,000 on a $1 million budget is close to spot-on in terms of those projections. So I will update this for the out-years as we get closer to the public hearing, the final adoptions on the budget, but we are in target, or on target with those projections. Also, when we have our vote on May 21st, we will have two of our board members whose seats are expiring June 30th of 2019. Those two seats will be on the ballot. The persons who receive the highest numbers of votes will be serving a three-year term that would expire in 2022. So if somebody is interested in serving on the Board of Education, there is a process where you have to get nominating petitions that have to be signed by residents within the town. This year, it is 49 signatures that need to be on those petitions, and you have some time to put that together, and that will determine who ultimately is on the ballot for our May 21st vote. So future meetings, transportation is next up, and technology at the February 27th meeting. And then you can see the other areas that will be covered. We will have a budget in place no later than April 17th. And then, May 1st, we'll have a meet-the-candidate night. And then the 8th will be the public hearing, all leading up to the budget vote on the 21st. Do start telling your friends now because we have to get the percentages up in order to hit the strategic plan. But that is the quick recap of where we are going into this year's budget.
Before we get to any board questions, I just wanted to let the community know that I am not planning to run for reelection this year. I had a wonderful nine years on the board, but it's time to move on. So I encourage any interested community members who are interested in running to get a petition. Are there any questions for Judy?
Just thank you for all that you do, and I mean, the fact that your estimate from last May is that close. I mean, that's just unbelievable.
Sometimes the crystal ball works.
Well, whatever it is, it did work, and so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think we'll take our break now so that PIK students can sign out. Sorry, Greg, you're gonna have a smaller audience, but... So presentation, but not the least of them, is our bond project update by our Director of Operations and Maintenance, Greg Nolte.
So I'm gonna have the shortest and most exciting presentation tonight.
At least a judge of that.
At least, exciting on my part. So as we embark on our next capital bond project, I wanted to update you of where we've been and the process of moving forward. I'm Greg Nolte, Director of Facilities and Operations. I've been with the district 19 years, and this is actually my fifth bond project. So change is coming. Change has happened, change is coming, so. All right, well, I'm not doing this by myself. We have a very large project team. The architect is Ashley McGraw. They are out of Syracuse. Our construction manager is the Pike Company. They're up in Clifton Park. This is Ashley's second project with us and Pike's first project. We've been meeting about every two weeks for the past couple of years. Many hours, many people to get us where we are, where we are today. Okay, so a little bit of the history. This doesn't represent all of the bond projects the district has done, but at least the five that I have been involved with. It does show that the district does recognize the importance of upgrading, improving, and maintaining our facilities. The current bond project of $32 million has a lot of exciting educational components, and it's not just the boring maintenance items and replacing roofs and boilers. So this is a little different from years past. So, and just as a note, right now, our building aid, I believe, is 69.5%, about, yeah. So I thought I'd give you a little basic capital project, how a project is developed. So pretty much, you have engineers and architects at some point look at all your facilities. We are talking with staff, and basically, we create what they call a five-year facilities plan. It's based upon a needs, conditions, program, and there's a lot of input. Once that is created, it's a very large document, then we kind of formulate exactly what we want to do through additional meetings, and then whatever we come up with, that needs a voter approval. Once that happens, then we go to the drawing board with our architects and our engineers, and we design it with input from our stakeholders, depending upon what we are designing. And then, once it's designed, we submit it to SED. And if you saw a recent article, you know, SED takes a long time to approve projects. For this project, it took just about a year for us to get their approval, okay? And then, once we get their approval, then we go out to bid. That gets us our contractors, then we construct it. And for something of this size, we will be observed and watched by a construction manager. They're gonna be our eyes and our ears on the project. And then, once we're all done with everything, there's lots and lots of paperwork that Judy has to fill out and submit to SED, so we get our aid. So it's a pretty long process from beginning, beginning to end. So specifically regarding our project 2015, it took us about a year to create this five-year facilities plan. The engineers were pretty much in the field and talking to a lot of people in 2015. In January, we actually have the document, and I believe it's on the website right now. So that five-year facilities plan was published. And then, pretty much for the year of 2016, we had board meetings, we had community meetings and forums, and developed this $32 million bond project or the scope of that project. November 29th, we had a positive referendum vote, and then, pretty much, the next day, we started designing the project. And it took us about a year to design the project, and we submitted to SED in December of 2017. And like I said, it was about a year to, for them to give us their approval. And we can't do anything until we get approval. We can't go out to bid. We can't do anything else until we have that process. So where are we now? January 7th, the project was advertised, and just last week, on Thursday, we received bids. We received a total of 23 bids for five prime contracts. And prime contracts is site, general conditions, HVAC, which is the heating component, plumbing, and electrical, okay? Each of the contract was well-represented with bidders, so we had a nice range of bids received for each one. The CM is conducting interviews and reviewing qualifications and looking at the numbers of each of the low bidder. and looking at the numbers of each of the low bidders. All of the low bidders are local contractors. And most importantly, all the bids came in within, within budget, actually below budget. All right? Which is very, very exciting, something that we've been working on for three years and estimating and guessing what, what the industry is. There's actually a lot of work out there, and that actually gave us rise to some concern that maybe contractors will beef up their prices a little bit. But either way, what you can expect is at the next board meeting on the 27th, you'll see a recommendation letter from the architect, myself, and the construction managers recommending a ward of these five prime contracts. So with that, we are, we are already starting to plan the start of this construction. And we plan it starting in April 2019. Much of the schedule, the schedule that you'll see in a little bit was based upon a successful bid, which we have. And it's going to be about a two-year process, and we'll be done with everything in the fall of 2020. Okay? So I'm just going to mention one thing to you about the middle school pool. Okay? You know, you might be aware that this bond project includes mechanical upgrades and redoing the finishes of the middle school pool. And just before bid time, we were alerted of a developing situation with a pool deck. Okay? We were noticing some cracking and some movement in that deck. So we got our structural engineer to come in. He actually went down, got very dirty, you know, going around the crawl space, looking at the structure. And basically, he determined that this need, this deck needs to be looked at before we do any finish work of the pool. Okay? So we pulled out all of the aspects of the middle school pool, okay, from the current bid. Okay? So we're going to get into a redesign or an additional design to include the work that we have to do on, on the pool deck. And we're gonna, and we'll bid it out as soon as that work is done. The middle school pool wasn't really slated to be started until March of 2020. So I don't see this, this hiccup as impacting that schedule at all. Okay? So just quick, and feel free to slow me down if I'm going too quick, but we have a $32 million bond project, and that is made up of a couple components. The largest being the construction component or the hard cost component of about $24.3 million. And built within that and in the contracts is about half a million dollars of allowance for unforeseen conditions. We have an incidental budget, or the soft cost budget, of about $5 million. And that is design fees, construction management fees, legal, printing, testing, furniture. That's within the incidental budget. And then the contingency of about 2.9, that represents about 12% of the construction budget. And that's there for, again, unforeseens. And we're actually comfortable with about a 12% budget for contingency. So one of the most anticipated projects at the high school is the, is the LMC. Basically, in June 1, we're closing this down. And it's going to be, the whole thing's going to be gutted. You can see in this rendition, you have a maker space as you first walk into the entrance there on the left-hand side. And straight ahead, behind the board table, we're going to have an innovative classroom with lots of technology in it. You know, these improvements are going to allow us to have a lot of diverse teaching and study areas. The help desk is actually going to be moved out into the student lobby as soon as you walk in, the left-hand side, just to make it more available to, to students. And they do a lot of neat things with these ribbons that are going to just provide a lot of nice accents to the space. This is actually a rendition from the back of the library, looking towards the table. You see a lot of furniture and different things. Another highly anticipated project is the auditorium. This is actually at the entrance to the main lobby, looking in. We're going to be taking about eight feet of the lobby itself. You'll see the entrances, there's actually going to be two entrances to the auditorium. This, we've been planning for quite some time, and we're going to be shutting this down August 16th, right after the musical and some concerts. And it's going to be closed down for about a year.
April 16th.
What did I say? Sorry. Sorry, everybody's making me nervous here, you know? So this is a rendition. We actually have these renditions outside of each space just to get the students and the staff and the community kind of excited about what's going to go on here. This is getting, you know, completely refurbished. It's going to be state-of-the-art. It's going to be, it's really going to be beautiful. So this is a view from the back.
Greg, I'd like to ask about the eight-foot that you're taking out of the lobby. After the play, for example, it's, it's like a Japanese subway. I mean, it is, you're packed in there like sardines. Is there any concern with the fire marshal as to the number of people that we'll be able to have in there?
Yeah, no, we will be code compliant. We were very concerned about flow in that main lobby because we know it gets very busy at times. The way that waviness of the auditorium, it actually is a little narrower towards the vestibule doors. Okay? And it gets a little wider as you go towards the main office. But this was necessary because we needed a lighting booth area, director's booth area. We were looking, you know, we had a committee regarding the auditorium. We didn't like doors opening up during performances. So like when you go into the movie theaters where you, you walk in, and then you take a left to go in, you know, so you don't have the lights, you don't have the sound coming in. So that was all designed into this. The far entrance is wide enough that we can get the grand panel in and down to the, down to the pit, which was always a problem. So, you know, we will be compliant from, from a code standpoint. Okay? I'm not going to say at times it's not going to get tight in there, but this was the best solution to, to kind of accommodate everything.
Thank you.
Do we incorporate storage? I know, I know you've been asked this question by theater moms. Is there storage? I know the closets are in the first, second hallway. And I think they're going to be gone.
Yeah, they're going to be gone. I've been dealing with Mike O'Keefe, and he's done a lot of cleanup of the stage itself because the stage is going to have a lot of changes. You know, we're going to make it wider, so you're losing, well, that storage shouldn't be there, some of that stage storage on scene.
There's a lot of, quite a bit of stage storage.
Yeah, so they've done a lot of cleanup. With what we're going to be providing here, that thrust stage that is stored onstage, that goes in the pit area, well, we're going to have one that actually sinks down into the ground, you know, so it's flush down there. And when we need it for larger performances or whatever, we can just raise it up. So we don't need to store that.
Well, I was talking more about the props closets on the side.
Yeah, so we've been talking, he, he's been down in A basement where they store a lot of stuff. There's an old telephone room, which is kind of dry, that we might use for props, or at least for costumes and different things. So he's done a lot of cleanup. We'll maximize what we can. I mean, unfortunately, we only have four walls here, and the space is a space. So, you know, whether or not we can put some cabinets onstage after this is done, you know, we'll have to see.
Yeah, I definitely, I'm just pointing it out from just having done it for so many years that there's three closets. One bathroom is completely costume-oriented, and then there's two, which is really like four closets, two double closets.
Yeah.
With, with props. And, you know, we don't want to have to reinvest in all of the costumes and obviously the props that we own. And I know that when we tried to store in A before, we weren't always able to put stuff down there. We were told no. So I think it will be a significant issue that we should just be very proactive on addressing before, you know, we get too far.
Yeah, so.
Just to look at it.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of work down in A. There was, you know, years ago, there used to be a lot of moisture down there, and we've, we've kind of corrected that problem. We've cleaned out and got rid of a lot of, a lot of stuff down there. And we're probably going to be able to give them a little more space for props. But they got rid of a lot of old stuff that was down there. You know, they just went down and purged everything. So this one room down there is going to be acceptable for costumes and stuff. You know, we can talk about it. But I know you're using the bathrooms or the closed-down bathrooms.
Yes, we're using the one bathroom, yes.
Yeah, so.
And it's, when we say we're using the one bathroom, it's from floor to ceiling.
I've been in there, yeah.
Front to back. And you can't really walk in there.
Yeah. We'll, we'll be talking a lot more about, there's a lot of exciting stuff going on here. And I'll be able to update you as we kind of move forward with the project. Okay, so tentative timeline. You know, the team has worked countless hours, involved a lot of staff members to kind of come up with this tentative construction schedule, this phasing plan, logistics. Basically, how are we going to build this thing? Because, you know, everything wants to be done, and everybody wants it done now, but there's just, it's just too big, you know? Contractor's only so big. We can't be working on everything in April. So we got to think about phasing and staging and where people move to. So this is just highlighting, you know, there's 110 projects within the bond. This is only highlighting some of the big ones. Okay? So you'll see, I think Slingelins and Hammergrill is on that. Not because they're, they're not important, it's just their work is primarily, there's some paving work and some camera work, and just didn't make this cut. But they're, they're going to get done. Okay? But in preparation for this, you might have seen, if you've been in D-122, we've already had some changes in D-122. We took out those old risers. We did some painting because basically, as of June 1, the LMC is going to be temporarily moving into D-122. All right? And we already have a plan. We've been working with staff here to get them moved over there. If you've been in the cafeteria, O and M staff actually built a room in there, and that's going to house the custodial offices and storage and some library storage because basically, we have to be out of the auditorium, and we're going to be closing off some of the hallways there. And the contractors are going to be using the front receiving area as their main mobilization area and basically coming in and out and getting materials in there. So a lot has gone into this. It may change as we start working specifically with our contractors once contracts are awarded. But, you know, this is going to be a constant communication as we go through this process. The goal is to basically complete this job with minimal disruptions to, to staff and students. So you're going to see, you're going to see me a lot more and other staff as we kind of go through this. We'll give you periodic updates as we kind of move forward. But we are, we are, or I am at least giddy because of last Thursday and the positive bond results. It's so much so that with this added work at the middle school pool that wasn't planned for, I think our budget is more than going to allow that work to happen as well. So there's going to be a lot of finished changes, so. Questions?
Is there a plan yet for what will take the place of the auditorium while it's out of commission?
Yes.
So, yes, I've been working with, the principals have been working with, or Dave has been working with, the individuals who typically use the auditorium up here. And Dave Norman has to basically identify what can be moved to other buildings in the district, which most things can be. I mean, it makes, the middle school auditorium obviously is going to get a lot more used next year. And some of the elementary things that would have been up here will have to be elsewhere. The one performance, the middle, the high school musical, obviously needs a bigger venue. So we're currently reaching out to other venues for possible options that we could rent out for designated period of time. So, but we don't have a location yet. But I know that the directors have been in touch with places to potentially use next year. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will recognize visitors on agenda items. Is there anyone who?
Questions? If Greg could answer them right now. I noticed that there was, from my own line of work, I know that thinking of things that can break budgets, I saw you had asbestos engineers down there. Has the asbestos been fully surveyed in the buildings? So that's all?
Yes. But it's not to say that behind that wall right there that we're taking down, we're going to find a pipe in there, and that's where that contingency and unforeseen.
And is there any lead paint in schools?
Yep.
And that's fully?
Yep.
And they're going to be there?
Yeah, and there's PCBs and caulk of some of the windows that we're removing. So, yeah, we did a full assessment of whatever we're touching because honestly, contractors will not touch it without looking at that report.
Right. How are they going to clear the lead paint areas before they allow people?
Well, it's usually, I mean, it's, it's not as crazy as asbestos.
Right.
But, you know, they will encapsulate and remove. Ultimately, it's what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next, on to finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through six.
So moved.
Any discussion? And we want to thank all the various donations that we have gotten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 27.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next, we will recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Future meetings, Monday, February 25th, there's a policy committee meeting. Wednesday, February 27th, there's a board meeting at 7:00 at the high school. 6:00 anticipated executive session. And then again, on Wednesday, March 6th, at the high school. 7:00 board meeting, 6:00 executive session. We have no reason to go back into executive session, so can I have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.